Could you just do that for me every time? Thank you. Don't let me forget it. You guys. Okay, it is six o'clock and we are opening the city council work session for March 4th for the city of Carlton. Would you like a roll call vote? Roll call would be good, thank you. All right. Counselor Terrell?
Here.
Counselor Thompson-Rizer?
Present.
Counselor Erickson?
Here.
Counselor Hill?
Here.
Counselor Ward-Mullen?
Here.
Counselor Skipper?
Here.
Mayor Watkins?
I think I'm here.
All are present and accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you.
City manager?
There are no changes to the agenda, so we will go straight into work session item A, which is an AV system update for the community room. You may have noticed that the microphones sound like they're working a little better. And so we had the AV subcontractors spent an entire day in this room on February 18th, and they addressed a number of ongoing challenges, including some of the ones that are outlined in your packet for the master tablet, Zoom, speaker buzzing, speaker microphones, the assisted listening devices we have for those who might be hearing impaired that might need some additional assistance, also working on auto clarity. And after this update, this memo went out on February 26th, we had another setting adjustment to reduce the feedback from the microphones. He did remind us that to make sure that when we're doing it is to angle the microphone towards us and not speak over it, but to make sure you're speaking to the microphone and to mute whenever possible to make sure you avoid potential feedback. We have had multiple follow-up sessions with the AV contractor over the last few months, and I did have a couple of citizens that actually wrote me letters based upon their experience, and I'm incredibly grateful to them for doing that. Is it something to be one voice when you're speaking and trying to get these issues resolved? But having their voice added to ours was incredibly impactful and I think was able to hopefully get closer to resolution on some of these issues. So I'm looking forward for additional feedback to anybody, particularly who Zooms in tonight or who may be in our audience and lets us know how they are being heard. That concludes the update.
Can we ask the public right now if they can hear us?
Only a hand here.
Can they ask the public right now if they can hear us better?
I can hear you on Zoom, first time in nine months. Nice to hear, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else out there?
You can hear us, okay.
You can hear us, okay.
I actually had one follow-up question. Will the camera angle be changed so that we can see everybody on Zoom so that we don't have disembodied voices?
That is something we are working on. Any other questions, comments?
Will there be a camera on the public speakers?
That is something within the Zoom settings that we're working on, but that's still a challenge, so I can't give a timeframe on that. It's more likely that we'll be able to solve the council's video first.
Thank you for responding to the letter. Thank you, Sharon. Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I've asked Gordon to come here tonight. We are talking to industrial users in the city, and I thought it was time that we talked to the council about why we're having this discussion, to talk about the aspects of that discussion, as well as to talk about our streets that we talked about at the last meeting and some of our project updates. So I'm going to hand it right over to Gordon, and Hannah's going to bring up his PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. I'm close enough. I'm assuming you all hear me. Okay. So industrial pre-treatment or an industrial program? So from the federal, state, and local regulatory documents, the city is given the authority to have a industrial pre-treatment program. It's not mandatory, but you have the authority. And so what they're looking at is, is that industry significant with regards to your wastewater flow? So that's what it's all about, is your wastewater flow. And you can see up there, some of the criteria that they look at, is the flow more than 25,000 gallons per day? Is the flow more than 5% of the flow of your facility on an average day is a load more than 5%? Now, there's other things that are looked at, so for instance, are there chemicals in there? You know, do you have a battery facility that's dumping acid into your... We don't. I'm just saying for instances. So what brought this up? Twofold. One, we're doing a wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Construction is started, and DEQ has already told us that in our new discharge permit, which they almost always do after you do an upgrade, they give you a new permit, they will require the city to do an industrial user survey. So we're not going to have the choice in the future, they're just going to say, "You're going to do it." Right now, we have the choice. And currently, what we have been doing is we know that there are some users in town that are impacting the wastewater treatment, and it's the wineries. And the city has been working with them on and off for probably a decade, trying to ooch the system along, and actually, two of the wineries now have pre-treatment facilities in them. So it's, we're making progress, slow progress, but now it's going to get kicked such that we have to do something. Next. Okay, so this is a cartoon that's from one of the DEQ pamphlets that talks about what is industrial pre-treatment. So this is one of those cartoons that, you know, it's scare tactic. Here's all the bad things that can happen from industrial users. Corrosion in your system, and corrosion is not just of metal. You can get corrosion on concrete as well. They got explosives, they got toxics going in the river, there's safety issues, there's all sorts of stuff that actually could happen. In Carlton, the only issue is load. We don't have any of those other nasty issues. We don't have anything that's explosive or toxic. We don't have anything that's going to be a safety issue for our employees, or even a corrosion issue. It's strictly load. Okay. So here's another cartoon of a typical pre-treatment facility. So this is just one mousetrap, there's all sorts of different ways to do it, so it's not like every industrial pre-treatment will have this exact facility, because every industry is slightly different. The intent of pre-treatment is to reduce the impact to the public system. Typically, that means reduce the flow and load so that it's equivalent of residential wastewater. Or it's moving close to that. You don't always have to get down to that. So pre-treatment is one of the ways of doing that. Bigger?
I thought this was...
Okay. So this is a graph that was put together about a decade ago. And you see the horizontal blue line? That's the average BOD load. Now, BOD is biological oxygen demand, and you don't really need to know what that is. It's just a measure of the strength of the wastewater. That's what it is, that's really all you need to know. So you can see peaks, and those peaks are coming from the wineries. And there's a peak when they're bottling and a peak when they crush. And that was, the peaks back then were about 700 pounds per day. Well, today, the average load from the city is about 600, and the peaks are about 2,200. So those are huge peaks, and it's gotten high enough that it's impacting the treatment plant. Back then, the treatment plant could really handle it. It's a lagoon system. Lagoon systems have the ability to take instantaneous peaks, because they're so big, it just spreads out that load over time. The loads now are getting so big that that's hard to do. So what does this mean? Well, we've got nine wineries, and there's the current impact, and if you average them out, they're, they each would have about 30% of a normal load, so probably all of them are going to be classified as industrial users. You only need one industrial user to have to put together a program. So it's pretty much a done deal that we're going to have to do it. So flow is not an issue. The flows from the wineries are pretty low. It's the load that's the big issue. And it's only an issue half of the year. The way that our permit is written is that from November 1 through April 30, we discharge to the river, and that's when we have a limit on our discharge. Yeah.
Just interrupt real quick. Can you just help me differentiate load and flow?
Yes. So flow, how much liquid is in that bottle? That's the flow. Load is, within that, how much dirt is in there? How much nutrients are in there? How much solids are in there? So it's all that stuff that would turn that brown. So, you know, when the, when it rains really hard, you go down and look at the river, it's chocolate brown? Well, that, that chocolate color is coming from the load. Flow is how much just went by. Okay, so the rest of the year, which essentially the summer, we do spray irrigation on farm fields. There's no load limitation on that. There's no, we don't have to meet anything, because we're just irrigating the land. So we only have to really be concerned about it for six months of the year. So the first step in this is what they call an industrial survey. And that's where you send out the survey to who you think might be industrial users, and you get a bunch of information from them. DEQ has a standard form for that, but we're going to have to modify it, because it doesn't take into account all the specifics of wineries. You know, their discharge is big only in two times of the year, and not all of the wineries discharge at the same time, and they don't all do the same thing, so it's not consistent. We have to try to get all that data before we can figure out what can be done. So that's the first step. We'll be doing that this year, yeah.
Do we have, or is it something as far as meter system on their?
We don't right now.
Is that something that needs to be done?
Right, so I'll get into that.
Okay.
So first step is just figure out what's there and what's going on. Part of that is load, part of that is flow. We're going to have to get some estimates of what that is. And like I said, that'll probably happen, well, it will happen this year, but it'll be an ongoing thing, because they only discharge at certain times, and so we might not get all the information we need in one year. May take a couple of years to get that data. And so what are the impacts? So potentially, there's changes to their operation and maintenance. Potentially, they're putting in pre-treatment. One of the things that happens is they will get a permit, and the permit will come from us, from the city, not from DEQ. This program essentially makes the city a regulator. We develop the permit, we give it to them, and then we monitor it. And it's up to us, if they don't meet their permit, what we do about that.
Do we have a template for the permit? Do we get a template from DEQ, or how does it?
We don't have a template right now, but there's all sorts of permits out there at other communities, so we'll be able to find some templates. So the, the other impact is rates. So, yeah.
Gordon, can I just be clear? So what happens if, if it's not regulated? Then it overflows the lagoon and we discharge polluted water into the river? Is that what happens?
Well...
What are the implications of not regulating it and treating it?
Not regulating the industrial. It's what we have right now, which is all the load goes down to the treatment plant.
Right.
And gets treated by the treatment plant. Right now, it's, the treatment plant is working better than it should on paper, so we're doing okay. And once we get the treatment plant in place, we should be able to treat all the load that we're getting right now, but we won't have any extra for people that want to develop. So essentially, the program is going to buy us back capacity at the treatment plant so the city can continue to grow.
So it's the load that is, is...
It's the load.
And the load, if, if that builds up too much, then we just don't have the capacity to treat it fast enough?
Right, so a, a treatment plant is biological. Essentially, what you're doing is adding air into it so that you can grow bugs that will eat the wastewater.
Right.
That's really what you're doing.
Right.
And so if you put too much load in there and you can't grow enough bugs, you don't get the treatment that you need. So that's, that's the impact. If there's too much load, you can't meet your permit.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. So rates are the other thing, so oftentimes, communities will say, "Okay, if you can't get down to a standard residential wastewater flow and strength, you can pay for the additional." So there'll be a, a rate component in this program.
Question for you, Gordon. Is that sort of an all or nothing approach? Or is it sort of the more pre-treatment they can do, the better they re-treat their discharge, the less maybe potential rates they would have to pay?
Yes. So it, it, there's, there's no absolutes in this. In fact, I one time was working with a food processor in Portland, and they wanted to add treatment capacity to their system to lower their loads so they'd lower their rates. In the end, they decided the rates were better, and so they didn't do the improvements. So yes, it's, there's not a, you got to meet this line. There's a in-between as well.
I have, sorry, one more question. So I guess I don't understand how raising the rate will decrease the load.
It doesn't.
Yeah, okay, so that's what I'm not clear on. So does that mean if you raise the rate, then you're going to add, you'll use those rate increases to add capacity to your treatment?
It's more about equity. So they're having a larger impact on your treatment plant than a regular residential house. So they need to pay for that, because, okay, there's additional power needed to add the air for treatment. So there's, there's an actual cost to putting in a higher load. So that, if they can't bring it down, then they have to pay for that as an equity thing, and the city does what it needs to with that, which is part of O and M, actually. Goes towards O and M. So those are the components of the system. Now, we had a meeting with the wineries in January, and I thought it was a very good meeting. They, we went through a lot of this information, told them the timing, that this is probably at least a two-year program before it gets put in place. It may be four years, but that gives them time to think about things and, and adjust. It's not a bam, you got to do it now. So they're very appreciative that the city is being proactive and actually doing this before we're mandated to do it. So they're very appreciative of that. And they were already coming up with O and M ideas, how they could do, do things differently to decrease the impact on the city. One of them actually is going to be trying that this fall. They're going to do something alternative with the Lees, and that's sort of a byproduct of when they crush. It's, it's essentially the crushed grapes that they got to get rid of. Well, they could truck that somewhere else. So they're already coming up with ideas, and, you know, Shannon can chime in. I thought the, the meeting was really good. They're, they're on board, they understand. So that's where we are with the industrial pre-treatment. So we're, go ahead.
So this treatment that may be needed by the different wineries, is it a system that has to be sunk in the ground? Is it above ground?
Oh, there's all sorts of mousetraps. So the one that's over here, I forgot the name of that winery, Flannure. It's underground. Yeah, the whole thing is two buried tanks, and there's equipment that injects air into it, and there's a control panel that's inside their building. Other potential systems might be above ground. It, it's not one size fits all, so it's specific to what they want to do. We're not going to mandate to them, this is the type of treatment you're going to do. We're just going to say, "You got to get it down. Now figure out how you're going to do that." And that includes part of that program, the permits, monitoring. So that's, that's where the monitoring of the flow comes in, and the monitoring of the load. So you need to know, once, once we're giving out permits, we'll need to know what they're discharging every day. So yes, at that point, we will be monitoring flow and we will be monitoring load. They'll monitor it, we'll review the data, just like DEQ does to us. We monitor, give them the data, they look at it. It'll be the same thing, except we're standing in the place of DEQ. Any more questions on that? So like I said, we're in the beginnings of this, so there'll be a lot more to come.
So with that monitoring, that going to require, say, another employee of town? Is this going to be a full-time job?
Well, there, there will certainly be time and effort, additional time and effort required of the city, because now potentially, you're going to have nine permits that you have to attend to. And I, I would guess that you don't have the staff level right now to do that.
Is that the end of this presentation?
Yes.
So what does monitoring mean in the real world? Is that another meter, like a flow meter?
Yeah, so a flow meter would tell you what the flow is, and then they take a sample of the wastewater and send it to a lab, and they come back and say, "Okay, your BOD was" whatever it is, you know, 20... come back and say, okay, your BOD was whatever it is, you know, twenty twenty parts per million, or three hundred, or a thousand, whatever it was, they the lab will do that test. I think the city does that at the treatment plant twice a month.
So maybe Flaneur over here is a good example of are they physically doing that right now? And what does that look like?
They're not doing it right now as a standard process. We we've got them to measure it a few times just to see if their system or how well their system is working, and we're still working with them on that. But once this goes into effect, and once they get a permit, it it'll just become part of their standard operating procedure.
And then what does so where does that meter reside? Is it on the sewer line itself where the connection is for the business to the?
The flow meter would be at the business, yes, before it connects to the city collection system. So you're just measuring the flow that they're putting out.
So potentially, once this, obviously, the survey and everything's in place, costs, would that all be borne on the individual?
These are.
User, like, it doesn't sound like there's anything the city has to do as far as on the sewer lines or anything?
No, the the cost of pre-treatment is on the industry. It's not the city's responsibility. Obviously, there's labor involved for the city, and the city bears that. It's part of your O and M then.
All right. Sorry, one more question, I think. How do we know? I mean, obviously, it's 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 obvious that we've targeted targeted is probably the wrong word, but identified the wineries as a high user. Do we have any other industrial users in town that we potentially think could be, because right now we have no way of knowing essentially?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it.
Identifying the wineries because they're clear.
It it's obvious that. Yeah. And when the wineries are not either bottling or crushing, our loads go down to about what we would expect. We could look at other users in town and potentially send a survey to them as well. But it doesn't appear that there are.
What what other potential industrial users would trigger this kind of regulation?
You know, in other communities like food processing, they use a lot of water, and they create a lot of load because a lot of that, you know, food goes out. I was in another community. If you remember Steinfeld Pickles, they had a sauerkraut facility in Scappus. And at that time, the load from that sauerkraut facility matched the entire load from the city. So food processors are another big potential. Then you have manufacturers of various things. I like I know one time, a battery manufacturer came to a town I was working in, and and eventually, we just said, no, because your impact on the wastewater was going to be so large, and they weren't willing to do any pre-treatment. So.
So if a potential development came in that would require this sort of pre-treatment, that would be part of the code when they were approved? They would there would be pre-treatment?
It it's already in the code.
Okay.
And if we and we all already asked that question, by the way, any anytime a developer comes to town, we ask that question. So we'll continue to ask that question, and when the program's in place, we tell them what the impact is. Say, okay, you want to come here. We have a program. You're going to get a permit. You're going to have pre-treatment. And that's the way it'll go.
Gordon, this is Planning Commissioner Madrid. So when you men when you mentioned food manufacturing, would you also be sending a survey to Carlton Farms? And then my other question is, would city facilities such as the pool and local facilities such as the schools be exempt? Because, for instance, neither of them operate year-round. They have peaks and valleys, too. And looking at the data, that first graph that you had, I mean, it's more than ten years old, 2014. So I imagine it's probably at least double that. And obviously, you know, we're going to have to grow as the town grows. So I was just wondering about those two factors.
Okay.
Wait a minute, Gordon. Mayor, typically, work sessions, as much as we value people's information and their questions, work sessions are for the board to be able to have informational discussions for upcoming topics that may be on a regular council agenda or at a town hall in the future.
Point taken.
Ben?
Yeah. So should I move on to the next one?
I mean, just as a I'm going to ask the question, but I I don't think Carlton Farms is connected to our.
I don't know if they are or not. And other users, if their load is regular, meaning equivalent of a house, so a restaurant, the pool, school, that's just regular wastewater. So those would not be industrial users, unless you have a gigantic restaurant.
Thank you, Gordon.
Okay, so pavement. Okay, so I was asked to talk about paving strategy and a study that was done in 2017. So that was done by an outside consultant that all they do is go to communities, assess their streets, and then put together a program. So that's that's all they do, and it's good data. And there's some data from that 2017. At that time, city had a little over ten miles of streets. And the PCI is just a way of rating the condition. And the average PCI was sixty-nine, which is fair. Eighty-five is good. And so what they do is they put together a program that says, okay, how do we get your PCI from sixty-nine to eighty-five? And so that's the financial program that they put together, and it back then, there was almost four million. Today, that'd be about five million. At that time, the city had about $25,000 a year for streets. So to do that, five million would take almost 200 years. So that program with the funding that the city has just is not feasible. You you'd need to have $1 million a year to do that for five years to do that program. So what they're looking at for a paving strategy and what that program was looking at is the most cost-effective way to get from fair to good. Whoops. And so it's a strategy of what they call best first. So you're taking advantage of the least expensive pavement prevention options. So that would be like crack ceiling, fog seals, potentially an overlay or grind in inlay. And what you find out is that it's most cost-effective to do those things and keep your streets that are fair and good in a fair and good condition. So that's what that $5 million was 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 for. So the actual impact of that is that dollars only get spent on streets that are in fair or good condition. Because you don't have enough funding to even do that. So you don't have anything left over to look at streets that are in poor condition. So if you follow this strategy because of the funding, the poor streets just get worse and never get taken care of. So that that's following the strategy, which is the most cost-effective strategy. So here's just pictures. On the left, that's a full street reconstruction. You can see they excavated, put down fabric, put down rock, then they're going to pave. On on the right, that's a overlay. They're just putting down asphalt. A lot more cost-effective. So an alternative strategy is there's more than one way to prioritize. It's not just cost. There's other criteria to look at. So condition, utilization, impacts. That funding strategy of best first does not consider where that street is, how much use it has, impacts to the public. So there's a whole lot of other criteria that really is important. So what the city actually has been doing, and what I think is prudent, is sort of a mix. And and it's based on the funding that's available. So there's a bit of prevention. So we've done some overlays. We've done some grinding inlays. And we, when we have the money, we've done some full street reconstruction. So one of the issues on transportation is the funding that's available. There's not as much funding available for streets. And you think, well, we got gas tax, but if I was talking to Brian the other day, and most of the gas tax money the city gets goes to street lighting, goes to power. There's not much left over. So there's things like small city allotment, which the city, that's a state program, and the city can apply for that every year. Recently, they've increased the amount you can get to 250,000. So still not a lot. But you can do a decent amount of overlay or grind and inlay for that. But you're not going to do a lot more. The downside to that is that while they increased the amount you can get, the entire pot did not increase. So what it means is they're giving out less grants. So you got the same number of agencies chasing fewer grants. So before, we might have got one, one every three years. Well, now it could be one every five. I don't know what it'll be, but it'll be less because there's way more competition. Getting funding from for larger projects is rare. We just recently got funding that's coming through ODOT. That is really rare, and that's allowing us to do a bigger project. So that becomes the issue on paving is how much money do you have and what can you do with it? And then how do you prioritize it? And my suggestion is you don't do always the best first. You got to look at these other criteria and 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 weigh them and decide what's best for the city, and that's what the city has been doing. And my understanding is that study was not adopted as a city program. So there's nothing that city council has done that says we have to do that program. That was data given to the city. It's good data. But you're not bound by it. So that's, you know, no silver bullets here and no, this is what we ought to do. And doing the mixed strategy is not as straightforward. If you do best first, you just look at your program and say, okay, we just march down the list. When you prioritize using the other criteria as well, it becomes more of a balancing and more of a case by case. So it's it's not as straightforward. But I think it's a better fit for where you guys are or where the city is. So that's all I had on the paving strategy. Question, Kevin?
Do we have a maybe you can answer it, or maybe it's a map that's provided. I just know that there's, you know, we're we're a city, you know, not unique to any other city, but so then we're bordered by Yamhill County. We have a highway that runs through our city. Where where does the city's responsibility lie on some of these roads? Like, do we do we have? You have that information of mainly, I'm talking about forty-seven that comes through.
Right, yes.
I've heard different things about main streets are a problem. Nah, it's ODOT's problem. You know, so like, just kind of curious, does it end at city limits and then exclude Highway forty-seven? Obviously, all the residential side streets, that makes sense. That's in the city's purview, but mainly kind of questioning what roads in our town are not our responsibility.
Right.
To maintain.
So nearly every community has their own streets, private streets, county streets, and state. You are responsible for the streets the city owns. So the county is responsible regardless of where the city limit is for their street. Now, you have one county road that comes into town a little bit, and that is East Main, and it comes to about Sixth Street. So from Sixth Street East is the counties. It's theirs to maintain, and they maintain it to county standards, which are different than city standards. Meaning county doesn't put in curb and sidewalk. They just don't do that. They don't put in storm systems, except for maybe culverts and ditches. So their standards are different, but they are responsible for that. Typically, it becomes a with counties and cities, they coordinate when it's inside the city. The state road or the highway is ODOT's. They are responsible for maintaining that pavement. Now, there has been discussion back and forth, and I don't know where we actually landed on the storm drainage. It's their storm drainage system. But there was some discussion about, well, but the city's supposed to maintain that and clean it. I don't know where that landed yet, or if it has landed, but the pavement is theirs. The sidewalks downtown, my understanding is that's the city's.
Yeah, just point of clarification. So can you tell me where the state picks up on forty-seven and where it ends?
It goes all the way through town.
So.
So it's.
Forty-seven all the way through from all pine, all of Yamhill, or not all of Yamhill?
Pine, Main, Yamhill.
All the way till you get past the fire department.
Oh, yeah. That's all ODOT, and it's their responsibility to maintain that pavement.
Thank you.
There there's also a private street in town. I know of at least one. That's not the city's responsibility.
Gordon, I had a question. We we talked about how little money we have to maintain these streets. So what actionable data are we collecting regarding our street conditions that inform how we use the limited funds we do? Is it just every time we dig up a street, we pave that and hope that it stays? Or is or is there some long-term strategy that we know we have this amount of money over time, and we're going to prioritize these streets?
Well, that was part of. Well, that was part of the intent of that study in, in 2017. That gave the city a snapshot of the condition. And you could do that again. You know, and, and get another snapshot. And some cities do that. They do that periodically, not every year. Maybe every five years they do it. And that gives them a picture of what is in their community. With regards to other data that we gather, a lot of that is what I would call anecdotal. Meaning you drive down West Main Street and you watch cars going like this, trying to avoid ditches and, and potholes and ruts. And, and you just, you know, city knows conditions. I don't know if you remember Park Street, what it used to be like. It was, you know, it was like one continual speed bump for half a mile. And it was just in horrible condition. It was like delaminating. So that was one of the projects that we used the small city allotment to address. So
But I guess
Right now, there's not a set criteria, if that's what you're looking at.
Well, no, I just, it concern, here's my concern. Is that we have such a limited amount of money. We know we're going to have this amount of money each year to do what we need to do. And it would seem prudent, given that we're doing a mix of strategies, which I support. If we're going to do that, then we should be identifying which streets are going to come first as we go through the money and, and spend money. Like reserve a certain amount for these whack a mole when you have to dig up a street and pave it. And then also have some long-term plans. Okay, the next street we're going to target is X, Y, Z, whatever street.
Yeah, we could have a more formal plan. We, we don't have that right now. We could do that. A lot of that, though, some cities have, have run into this, this issue. They have a formal plan and they will just go down that list. Their funding doesn't match the list. And so they don't do projects. They got some funding and they don't use it because they can't do that one project that's next on the list. So there is some, I would think, some give and take on that. But having a long-term strategy is, I think, a prudent step.
And it seems like the last study, I mean, we haven't done a lot of changes in the last, since that study was done. So it seems like that study is still valid.
Well, I'm, I'm going to show you, the last thing I'm going to talk about is some of the projects we've, we've done. And some of that is some of the streets we've improved. So you can, they're listed out there. You'll see what we have done. Should I move on? Okay. I mean, keep that, okay. So the last thing that Shannon asked me to do was to talk a little bit about what the city's been doing the last six years. So I'm going to caveat this with several comments upfront. So I've been working with small communities for my whole career, so 40 years. And one of the things that I've noticed is that a community of this size will do a typically a large project every seven to 10 years. One large project every seven to 10 years. And then yearly, they might do a, a smaller project, like an SCA grant. So over six years, that might be seven projects. And what you're going to see is we'll have about 50 in the last six years. So one of the other caveats is all of these projects, they're, they're infrastructure projects. These are all above keeping the city just operating. So city staff is doing all their tasks to do O and M daily. And then we're doing these projects on top of them. The other caveat is that the city has been assertive and effective on funding. And I don't have the exact dollars, but I think we're getting close to 25 million dollars in grants. That is phenomenal for a community of this size. And in an era where grants were harder to come by for a little bit with the ARPA funding and Biden's funding package. There were some grants, but before that, it was hard to come by. So the city has done a lot of this work without direct impact to monthly user rates or taxes. It is, it's really, I think, phenomenal what's been done. Everybody can pat themselves on the back. This is a lot of stuff. So 17 water projects? I'm not going to go over each and every one. How much time do I have? Five minutes? Okay, so here's a big list. And go to the next one, I'll show you some pictures. So that's the inner tie. That's an emergency inner tie with Menville Water and Light. Makes the city's system so much more resilient. Next. That's the clear well. So that's a tank up at the treatment plant. You can see it before and after being coated. Next picture, I think, shows some structural improvements done on the inside. The middle picture is a hole that was in the bottom of the tank. Next. That's the, the treatment plant itself before and after. So you can see it was in rough condition. All the filters got rebuilt and the whole thing repainted. Next. There's the controls. We upgraded all the controls. The controls were so old, you couldn't find replacement parts. Next. That's the floating dock. You probably remember the picture. The old one fell in, into, just sort of disintegrated. Next. A lot of piping that was put in the ground. Next. So a list of some more projects. And note that there were several large projects done before this six-year period. Next. So some of the impacts. Saved 110,000 gallons per day. That's about the best water conservation project I have ever seen. And you can see that on average, we use about 300,000 gallons a day. So that's a quarter of the water that we were producing was getting lost because of leaks that we stopped because of those projects. Now, we have better treatment, better control, a more, I can't spell, stable water system, a more resilient water system. The water system is in the best condition. And you can ask Brian about this too. He'll say the same thing. It's in the best condition it's ever been in. And the treatment plant is working better than it ever has. So all of that improvement has done a lot for the city. Next. Wastewater, that's the next thing we're doing. We're 12 projects. Some of those, treatment plant is in construction. We have a couple other projects that are still in design. But when those all are done, which will probably be end of this year, maybe end of next year, this wastewater system will be in the best condition it's been in for a long, long time. Some of that will replace some of the old clay pipe. It's probably just a hole in the ground now. Lots of iron, yeah, sorry. Lots of iron coming in. That'll also replace the force main that broke twice last year. And the treatment plant will just, it'll have more than, it'll have like two and a half times the capacity that it has now. Next. So those are just more of those projects. Funding applications, land use. We've had more than 60 land use applications or pre-applications. Some of those actually went through, but that's how many have been coming through the city. Next. Just some pictures. That's the new headworks. That's down at the Public Works Department. Next. That's Market Street. So just over here. And next. There's concrete pump station. Look at the size of that pump. And it's probably about five feet tall? Big pump. Now, now that's got all the capacity we need. Next. That's the treatment plant. They're just starting to do the work down there. Next. So street projects. Some of these were done in the same project, but those are all the streets and projects that we've done. So the TSP update is in process right now. And you can see a bunch of the streets that have got overlays or grind and inlays. Next. And here's a bunch of other projects. So some of these are stormwater. Stormwater master plan is in process. The Mercury TMDL, Third and Washington improvements. Of course, this building, the Civic Building, cop plan and code updates. So a lot of work. Next. I think that was it. I was rushing through, but yeah. So the point being, the city has been really, really busy and got a lot of work done in the last six years. It's just a phenomenal amount of work. And it's really made the city in a much, much better position with regards to the public facilities. That's it.
Should we make the point that Gordon is not a full-time staff person? He is on, he is on contract with lots of, lots of, lots of companies. Okay. We're going to move right into the regular meeting of Tuesday, March 4th, for the Carlton City Council. Oh, trying to get going here. Could we have the roll call, please? Turican, Commissioner Terrell? Excuse me, Counselor Terrell. Here. Counselor Thompson-Rizer?
Here.
Counselor Erickson?
Here.
Counselor Hill?
Here.
Counselor Ward-Mullin?
Here.
Counselor Skipper?
Here.
Mayor Watkins?
I'm here.
All accounted and present.
Please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands my nation, indivisible, liberty and justice. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, there are two additions to the agenda. There's a proclamation that will be done under ceremonies, appointments and announcements. And then there is a new item B that will be discussing the rail corridor. So that will go directly under item A, making adoption of the 2025-26 Council Goals, item C.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay. Ceremonies, appointments and announcements. We have a proclamation to read tonight. Honoring the life and legacy of Mike Larson, who some of you know have passed away yesterday. Whereas the City of Carlton and, and its residents mourn the loss of one of our favorite sons, Mike Larson, whose presence in our community was truly larger than life. And whereas Mike's great smile, boundless enthusiasm and unmatched energy touched the lives of many, bringing joy and inspiration to all who had the privilege of knowing him. And whereas his contributions to our community, his unwavering kindness and his dedication to those around him have left a lasting impact that will not be forgotten. And whereas we recognize and celebrate Mike's legacy as a cherished friend, neighbor and community member, whose spirit will continue to live on in our hearts. And whereas the City of Carlton extends its deepest condolences to Mike's family, standing in solidarity with them during this difficult time. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Carlton, do hereby proclaim that the City of Carlton honors and remembers the life of Mike Larson. Let it be known that his memory will forever be cherished and his spirit will remain a part of our community. The City of Carlton. Okay, yes. Item six, citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state their name and street address and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. We want to note, because we've been concerned about this. When you make comments, we will take the information if you want any response back from the city to let us know. We don't have those discussions during the meeting. We'll take your comments and then we'll come back to you and do what, follow, do the follow-up outside of the meeting. So when you make your comment, that's, that's it. Thank you. Having said that, are there any comments? Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Dorner, I'm at 11200 Northeast Midoffery Road. I read the memorandum about the AV system in the community room in the agenda packet. And I am very relieved to see that there is progress being made to improve the public's experience with the poor quality of audio and the Zoom issues that have been a chronic issue since we've opened the Civic Center. So yay on that. As I looked through the agenda for the Planning Commission meeting coming up in March, I didn't see anything on the agenda to discuss wetland buffers. It was my understanding and the way I remembered it that the February City Council pushed this topic to the February Planning Commission meeting. I might be wrong, but although it was the last thing on the agenda, it wasn't covered at that meeting. And I'm concerned that it isn't on the March Planning Commission agenda either, at least so far. So wetland buffers are an important issue, issue to me. And I am dismayed that they are not on the agenda. Thank you.
I know. Any other comments? Questions? Thank you. Which brings us to Which brings us to item seven, which is our consent agenda. Do I have any comments on the consent agenda or are we ready to approve them? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, ordinances, resolutions, discussion and action items. Item eight A. West Main Street Improvement, governmental agreement.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, in front of you are actually two documents. One came after the, like, one came after the publication of your memorandum and that is the IGA that was sent to you afterwards. The second was a document that was referenced in paragraph two about the SCA termination. After some discussion with ODOT about whether that was still needed because it is referenced in the IGA, they determined that they, it was needed, although I initially made some changes to that SCA documentation because of the amount of work and negotiation that went into the agreement. I am comfortable with the ODOT original termination language for the SCA. The agreement in front of you, the IGA in front of you probably represents hundreds, if not thousands of hours of staff time of Tyler, Gordon, Brian, myself, city councillors at meetings, fighting to get this project moving forward. This is one and a half million dollars of federally directed spending that was allocated in FY23 federal fiscal year. We were made aware of it on December 22nd, 2022, and we have been working on it since that point in time. This is a culmination of all of that work. And I do want to credit our state and federal representatives because without them, we may not be at the position in which we are now. This agreement that is in front of you reflects a huge amount of work on the ODOT side of accommodating language that you see that is a culmination of my comments, Gordon's comments and Tyler's comments. And there was still some negotiation right up until Sunday evening and even Monday evening at nine o'clock at night, in which we were negotiating provisions that were causing heartburn and ODOT that we would either not accept or were not acceptable because it gave unilateral benefits to ODOT that were not reciprocal to the city. And so I worked with Savannah Crawford at ODOT. She has been amazing and that is the result of the document that is in front of you. I would highly recommend that council approve at this point in time. And I may not have said that until tonight, but at this point in time, given the amount of work that ODOT has done and incorporated as far as language, as far as our concerns, I highly recommend that the council approve these two documents so that we can move forward towards utilizing that one and a half million. One thing I will mention, there is a 10% or 10.27, I think it is, match from the city. We are utilizing a small city allotment grant that predates the 250,000 that Gordon referenced that the SCA program has moved to. That has also been something we've negotiated with ODOT over time because we've had to get extensions of it in order to preserve that amount of money coming to this project. There has been consideration that we forfeit it and apply for the $250,000. And my argument has always been, I'd rather have the hundred than the chance that we may not qualify for the 250 and therefore I have to come up with that and some other transportation fee for those match funds. So that SCA, although we are terminating it, you will see it is very clearly articulated in several places throughout the document that SCA money counts towards the city match money.
Edit? Comments?
I want a little bit more explanation on that. That's where I'm kind of struggling. I mean, in one part of the language, it says the SCA is terminated. And then on another part of the language, it's saying we're using the SCA as matching funds. It seems redundant to me, so I'm.
For the internal calculations of ODOT, they have to technically terminate the SCA and put those monies into another pot. But this was the way to preserve it as far as match funds and make sure that those funds didn't get lost.
So it's essentially terminating the SCA, but renaming it to matching funds?
Correct.
Money doesn't go away.
Money does not go away. However, what is a caveat right now is that those, that SCA is tied up. And with that $250,000 change with the SCA program, we can only have one SCA project, sorry, I was going to program, that didn't make any sense, project open at a time. So we cannot apply for another SCA grant until this project is closed out. That is something I'm still working with ODOT because they said the funds have to be expended, which for $100,000 on this project, we should be able to do pretty quickly. But that is where they're at right now. So this is still always also important for us to be able to move forward so that we can apply for another SCA grant, even if we have to wait until this is completed.
When is this looking to be completed?
We do not have a timeline right now from ODOT. I will tell you, they are working closely with us in our coordination with our sanitary work under West Main, which is part of the 2.2 million dollar federal award that we received that will be for Grant Street and for West Main. And that, that is about to go to DEQ for review. And we anticipate and plan on bidding out that project as soon as we have DEQ approval and hopefully to be able to construct that this year. Part of that project is we are going to be reconstruct, stop me if I'm using the wrong language, but essentially replacing pipe under West Main rather than lining it so that we can help address some of the subbase of West Main. And so that, that helps address some of the concerns that were being triggered by ODOT's $3 million budget, which was repair of the subbase triggered stormwater requirements. And so by us helping with that through the sanitary work, we are able to address some of those concerns. What, so what that does to answer your question is we hope to have that project constructed this year. We are working with ODOT to have the West Main paving portion of it designed this year, hopefully for construction, next construction year.
Shannon, the federal funds that are financing the sewer repairs, the sewer line repairs, are those in the bank already or are those still waiting on federal whim?
Those are, we've currently finished the application process. They are not in the bank, they are being held by the EPA, but they are appropriated and obligated as per the language for the federal contract. Is there any crystal ball guarantee right now? No, they are as secure as I can make them at this point in time. And we are diligently working on, I think Gordon is probably annoyed by how many emails he gets from me about, where are we to DEQ, is DEQ looking at this? So.
Well, so, so what happens, I have to what if this, I'm sorry. What if they decide all of a sudden, yeah, no, we're not going to, the federal government says, yeah, no, we're, that's going to be one of our do's, deletions. Is, does that compromise what we're doing with the West Main paving?
Gordon, I saw you pull the microphone up, did you want to address something?
Sure. My understanding is that when this IGA gets signed, that obligates the funds. And that's one of the triggers for the feds. It then becomes obligated. So signing this is one more step in securing those funds. So from, from our standpoint, it, it's not obligated because we usually look at construction. But from the federal standpoint, it's been obligated. So, yeah.
Sorry, so worst case scenario. I think what councillor Terrell was saying, I think, we sign this agreement and then the other monies gets axed. We could still go through with this paving and everything, we just wouldn't get that stormwater.
Councillor President, the EPA monies are actually at this point more secure than these monies.
The sewer project is moving forward and the sewer project would actually improve the base on the north lane. So essentially half the street would get attended to through the sewer project, even if we lost the transportation funding.
And, and then I noticed that some of this was, the federal highway department had to keep applying for money as it went through this project. I can't, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my one that I annotated, that I copied at home. But it seemed like as costs, they had to each stage of their project, they had to continue to apply for federal money to finance it? Am I wrong on that? Okay. Where is it?
It's reimbursement is how it.
Right, the project funding request, yeah. On page 11. Will you talk to me about that, number five, page 11?
So ODOT has to ask the federal highway administration for cost reimbursement because it is being funneled through the federal highway administration through to the certified agency of ODOT. So they have to ask for cost reimbursement. Attachment number two, starting on page 11, is federal boilerplate language. This is something that they would not negotiate except for paragraph nine of attachment two. And if you read there, it says, if the agency makes a written request for the cancellation of a federal aid project, agencies shall bear 100% of all costs incurred. I will tell you that's significant because it said 120% originally. The other portion of that that's significant is that we changed the agreement. That was part of my red line, that they were able to unilaterally approve any award over 110 to 120% of the bid without consulting us. That is something I redlined and negotiated and was able to secure in this agreement, that it is 100%. And that is the only match that they would do in the federal boilerplate attachment. Everything else is federal boilerplate that they say they need to incorporate because it is federal highway.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I have, I have one more. So our match is for the 1.5 million and that's the 100,000. But then there's another like 70,000 on top of that, how is that funded?
So the project is estimated at 1.6 in the document. We have made it clear that we have the 1.5 plus the 10.2% match. I recognize that there is a difference. If that difference does come, it will be on the city.
Right.
We are okay, we can, but we will. We've made sure in the agreement and several paragraphs in here, they have to consult us before making any adjustments to that. So we have to agree and say, yes, we have that liquidity.
I, I see. So the 1.6 million is what they estimated it'll cost, but we are, we are hoping that it's going to be 1.5 million.
1.5 plus 10.27%.
Yeah, got it. Are there any other questions? Yeah, I'm sorry, just one more. So if we decide, so if with all the rising costs of everything, it, it does come to 1.6 million, where would we, from what accounts would we draw that, that additional money?
We would look at our transportation accounts, our transportation SDCs. We would look at all of our transportation funding at that point in time.
So as, as I understand it, SDCs are just for development funds. So those would be just for projects related to development? No?
No, the SDC funds are to be used for projects listed in master plans. That's where the funds are used, it's not for development. So if it is listed like the TSP that is plan that's almost close to being completed, those projects will qualify.
Thank you for that clarification. And then our, our gas tax and all of that, those funds are mostly for lighting, Gordon said, we use that for.
That's my understanding from what Brian told me.
Okay, so those probably wouldn't be available.
With all the new development and new street lights and the PGE increases, it does take a substantial amount, but it does cover other things like street striping and safe, other safety factors. We do have some funds available in the capital improvement fund for some projects that we've already got some long-term goals on. And then we will have SDC money more freely to use. The quantity by the time we get to that, I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I just think that, reading through all this, I think, I, in hearing from Shannon and Gordon and everybody, I think there's an urgency to this, which I agree, we all know the condition of the road out there. So I don't want to lose any of this funding and opportunities for sure. So anybody, does anybody else have any questions for? So I move that the city council approve the updated project scope and delivery process for the West Main Improvement Project as detailed and in under intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation and authorize the mayor to execute all required documents to facilitate project implementation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, may I make a comment? I don't think that your city manager appropriately stated how hard she worked on this. She got ODOT to take out indemnification language that I don't think I have ever seen taken out of any contract with a governmental agency, with a third-party contractor, with a private company. I honestly, before this, I would not have thought it was possible to get that kind of change done. And that was one of the last changes that I was very worried about because I didn't want the city to potentially be on the hook because of something ODOT did. And Shannon's years of pushing on this is truly incredible.
Yeah, this was a program that was going on for a long, long time and I think there was a lot of despair that it was ever going to get done. So, yeah, thank you very much.
And thank you to the support of Gordon and Tyler throughout this. And Gordon, thank you very much for your synopsis at the work session of all, all that we've accomplished as well as all that we have on our plate.
Alrighty, did we vote? Yeah, you got in the way there. Okay, moving along to item eight B, the rail corridor.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, Amy's going to be handing out a memorandum. And in my efficiency to have her hand these out, I gave her my copy. So. This was one of the council goals that came up as an action item to engage in discussions with Yamhill County to explore options for controlling or purchasing the rail corridor within city limits. The objective to enhance public safety, including fire and police services, improve transportation through better road crossings and expand bike imp- improve transportation through better road crossings and expand bike and pedestrian infrastructure to support community connectivity and mobility. Since this became an action item onto the council goal setting, um, I have made the TSP consultants aware of this so that they can start incorporating it into their alternatives analysis for bike and pedestrian safety as well as transportation. Also, on February 28th, Councilor Erickson and I met with Yamhill County to gauge the collective interest in such an initiative. Um, as I mentioned, the timing of these discussion aligns well with the TSP update. And Yamhill County has expressed interest in exploring these options. They have requested that upon agreement by the city council, that the city formally communicate its interest to explore. And I'm going to emphasize is explore. Controlling or purchasing the rail corridor within the city limits. Additionally, the county is suggesting including specific actions. The city mentioned we'd like pursued such as conducting a survey to see where exactly those boundaries are. Exploring value assessments through the county assessor and options for those value assessments. And seeking permission to explore grant opportunities while still under county ownership for cleanup and improvements to improve fire and public safety. To advance action 1.10, it is recommended that the city send an official email to the county expressing this intent to explore. I, I would also recommend that if we send this email, and I do recommend that we send this email because there is no obligation to the city or to the county for this exploration for future action or purchase. But if, when this email is sent, I would also recommend that the city council organize a town hall meeting to gather input, engage the public interest of our community and our citizens in this initiative for public and fire safety and transportation enhancements. In addition to the community town hall, I would encourage council to engage with adjacent landowners to the rail corridor to understand their perspectives, concerns and potential impacts that we may face, or that may, they may incur for any purchase in the future.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I, more of a comment probably. Um, sorry, I would. I guess as at goal setting, um, I'm comfortable with this because you emphasized the words exploring options. I still have very big concerns about us taking over ownership. As we know, cleanup has been an issue. The county owns it. They're not doing it. We had counselors who, I appreciated their effort to organize volunteer efforts. We've already explored that the city staff probably doesn't have the time to clean and maintain it. So I have some concerns, but I think as those will be addressed through this process, through the town hall, through the conversations that happen. So that's why I'm okay with the exploratory effort, but my concerns are still there.
Are there any other comments?
I agree it would be, um, a good thing to explore. I, I'm, I very much hope that it would, that would be a, something that I would hope that would go through. On the other hand, I see there's challenges around it, um, from adjacent landowners. I think they will definitely have comments about it. I'm wondering, the, the first bullet point says conducting a survey of the corridor. We are agreeing to do that survey or we're just saying we would like to see a survey done somehow?
We would like it to see a survey done from the county. And it would either be through the county surveyor or we did ask our surveyor to put together a quote. Um, and that quote was provided to the counties for their information.
So my, my personal opinion is it would be value added to our community. However, I think it would be critical, given that no matter what happens, city would be donate, would be, if it was agreed to in the end, city would be, um, dedicating finance, financial assets towards it. Um, that we have a town hall to hear how people react to the possibility.
I also, I also have a statement to make. There have been citizens that have made comments to me about a, uh, this, this corridor and being used for recreational use. One of the biggest feedbacks that I've received, other than no, we don't want it, is, um, that they want good rules and control over it by the city, should we gain control over it. Um, and that's to say if it becomes a green space or a park or a walkway or whatever, they want to know that it's not going to have a negative impact by them, by people dumping things or doing illegal activities back there, that we would be well on top of it.
The stuff they're doing now.
Yes.
Part of it is to try to stop the people dumping their debris and trash, hiding things, fire danger. That's been the whole push and drive behind this start with.
And I think the counselors that have stepped up and moved forward and our volunteers, you too, Grant, uh, for pushing this forward and bringing it into the light. So, uh, it, that's not to diminish any of the work that you guys have done. It's just, that's the sentiment that a few of our neighbors have had and have been brought to me. So I just wanted to pass that forward at, at this council meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to send an email to Yamhill County expressing the city's intent to explore options for controlling or purchasing the rail corridor with the actions discussed at the March 4th meeting and arranging a town hall for the community members and those adjacent to the rail corridor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item B, adoption of 2025-26 council goals.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you are aware, you met on January 25th of this year and had a almost day-long goal-setting session um, in which you thoroughly went through each of these goals and adjusted them, modified them and added some. And so these are critical for, to guide future budget planning for this upcoming year and resource allocation. And so these are in front of you today, um, to be adopted and agreed, agreed upon for this next year.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
One quick question. Um, under goal two, housing and livability, um, there's some red lines in there. Those, is it safe to assume those will become action items? The, um, accessory structures that are actively in process, the wetland buffers, historic district?
Thank you, Council President. I meant, meant to mention that, so I appreciate your kind guidance there. Yes, at the February 4th meeting, I asked for further clarification and direction of prioritization because these action 2.1 and 2.2 were, were pretty large items. And it was decided at that meeting that the first priority in the policy area was accessory structures and that is actively in process and being discussed at the planning commission level. And then the next one, um, if the planning commission, when the planning commission has time for discussion would be to go to wetland buffers. And then, then to the historic district. Those were the top three that were given at that meeting. And they will be done in order and put into place in between land use applications that come in, the work on the TSP that is scheduled to be done in June or July of this year. Thank you again, Council President.
Is there any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move that the city council adopt the 2025-26 council goals as discussed and agreed upon by the entire council at the goal-setting meeting on January 25th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, 2025 pool season update.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is just an informational item. I wanted to let you know what was happening with the pool. We're getting ready for the upcoming pool season. Um, Ashley wasn't here, uh, wasn't able to be here tonight. Um, but she did write a memorandum of they've been recruiting lifeguards, they've been doing the cleanings, they've been doing intake for new guards. Um, we have, um, sorry, I'm glancing at the memorandum very quickly. Um, we have been addressing items that were, uh, mentioned in the survey that was sent out at the end of 2024 pool season and been able to incorporate what we can, um, with our resources. Uh, did you want to add anything else to that?
Um, last year was a, a pretty good year for us as far as adding extra programs, adding extra activities. We were able to get a lot more teen swims and some other things in that, um, we hadn't been able to offer the, um, for a couple of years and we were, had an abundance of guards. So we're hoping that's going to be the, um, same this year as we continue. Um, the community survey was critical for us to hear what the feedback was and we are shaping around that. But one thing we're really excited, we're trying to see if adding these extra activities and the, um, events will bump up that revenue to, um, keep that, uh, pool a little less out of the red. So, um, we're excited. We won't know until the end of June though, how that transpires because the pool crosses over fiscal years. So we don't have a true picture until the June revenues come in. But you, we'll be giving you an update on that too. So pretty excited for the season.
Are there any questions? I don't think we need any action on this. We're, okay, we're good to go. And item D, community preparedness event update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to give my voice a little bit of a break for the next three items and hand it over to Ms. Amerson.
Uh, as some of you know, because you were in attendance, we had the Carlton Yamhill Lions Club come in and they did a community event focused on, um, community preparedness. Uh, I will say they did a way better job getting people to come to me. There was over a hundred people in this room. It was.
Standing.
It was standing room only. It was fantastic. Uh, the responses that I've got back, uh, was very, it's been very, very positive and beneficial. And the Lions Club is actively, um, they might be coerced by me, but I want to do another one. I wanted to make it a, an annual, if not biannual event, maybe focusing on different types of, um, different angles as opposed to just a broad topic, but maybe narrow down the focus. But yeah, it was a great event, well-attended and, um, appreciate those that did come.
Are there any questions? Comments?
I do have one comment. Um, in conjunction with that, the city took the time to update their website to include a full page of emergency preparedness. It's available. We vetted it by, um, one of our expert counselors and, um, the city manager. But we have not only the two weeks, we have the certa. It's a, please go visit it. It's an amazing page. And it has seasonal emergency. It has senior citizens. It, it really covers the gamut. And with good links to get to any questions someone might have on that topic.
And assuming we have internet at the end of the meeting, I will show you where to find that.
Thank you. Thank you both. Alrighty, electric, item E, electric vehicle chargers and DEQ clean fuels program.
Begin. So this has been a very good learning experience for me. Um, we have the electric chargers here. Um, we did have them in our previous city hall building. I think you remember those two units that we had. I don't know that we were compliant after reading what we have to do for DEQ and in order to get credits that actually we can cash in and use as money towards projects or whatnot. It does take quarterly reporting here from staff. And their system is not entirely user-friendly. They're still kind of working on it and getting some updates going in there, but they have a lot of tutorials. So I've been learning a lot about their system. But it is quarter report, reporting. And if we do not do these reports, we do not earn the credits. So those credits would be lost, which we cannot bank. And what we would do is every time you make a report, you add your credits and we just bank and we just build and we just build that money that comes in. I did learn that there is some cities, one city that started at the very beginning of this reporting process has just claimed their credit money. So they've let it bank since 2017. So it does take a little while before you have enough money to maybe use for a project, but it is something to keep in the back of your mind, um, that we have a savings account technically kind of growing back there. But there is quite a few reporting requirements. And that's as of now. That doesn't mean that they, they won't change or alter in the future, but we, it's something to keep track of and monitor to make sure that we are doing reporting and we are also paying attention to state law to make sure that we are doing any updates that are required. So some of the, uh, OARs are listed in the memo that we have to record and/or, um, report. Uh, so there's, that's just a small snapshot, but is there any, any questions about? Counselor Skipper?
I don't, I know a little bit about car chargers, but, um, I'm assuming that information of electricity used comes directly from the chargers. Because as far as I know, that's not separately metered. It's running off of our panel. So.
Yes.
It, it should come directly from the chargers. It's not something we have to try to decipher sub-meter somehow, what energy usage is going from the chargers.
Right. We did, when we, when the building was built, it was set up so that the chargers do have their own breaker, but it is off of the same, same power box. So we cannot delineate what's going to the charger, what's going to the rest of the building. So Blink does do monthly reporting that they send out showing the usage per unit. Um, and that is the information that we would use for the reporting. We would just have to compile it into a quarterly format. And there might be some, there's actually some like, the way that Blink does it in kilowatts as opposed to what DEQ wants it. So there is a little bit of, you know, formulas that I have to change it into. But yes, we use the information from Blink in their monthly reports. So we don't have to guess and check.
Is there been much interest or use?
Not yet, but we, we're still trying and we need to get the word out. We wanted to hold off until we had the, the Blink portal set up. So we actually had the rate amount charged so that we were actually charging the, an appropriate amount to cover the city's electric use per kilowatt hour of the use of the charger. So now that that's all set up, we are going to go gangbusters pushing it out there pretty soon.
And these will show up on maps where visitors come into town to know they're.
Correct. So that was one of the requirements of the grant is we had to register it through several, several different systems, um, state and federal so that it would show up. I do think there is a little bit of time component for them to get all updated, but, um, it should start showing up anytime. Yeah.
Um, I don't own an EV, um, so I can't speak to this, but would it be beneficial maybe in the future to look at a sign? Like, uh, I've, I've seen them in different areas I travel. You know what I mean? There's little blue and white signs saying EV charging.
Right.
I'm, I'm sure there's apps and things for those who own EVs, but I don't.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think there is apps, but signage is definitely, it's actually required through the grant program and through Blink systems to, to post your signage. So we're just trying to figure out a very aesthetic way to do that.
And this is just a, a good example of something that on the outside looks very simple. There's two chargers standing there, but there's a lot that goes on the backend that's required as far as even just the calculations of taking the monthly reports and changing them from kilowatts to whatever DEQ wants it formatted into signage and whatever other reporting requirements.
Begin. Yep. Last month, I mentioned a surplus sale at the end of the meeting. This is the formalized paperwork in order for council to declare surplus so that we can actually sell and dispose of the items that way. So Resolution 2025-367 does just that, declares the certain person's property as surplus and authorize its disposition.
Are there any questions? Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move that the City Council authorize or approved Resolution Number 2025-367 declaring certain personal property as surplus and authorizing its disposition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty. Item G, Sidewalk Repair Program Follow-Up Information.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council. This was also coming out of the January 25th goal-setting meeting. And in February, we talked about several approaches to sidewalk repairs and several of the grant programs, about half a dozen. And the council asked for more information from the cities of Corvallis and Woodburn. We've not been able to connect with the city of Woodburn yet, but we have spoken to Rory Rowan of Corvallis Transportation Division Manager. Mr. Rowan previously worked for the city of Bend, so he had valuable insights for both Bend and Corvallis. Prior to his departure from Bend, the city conducted a comprehensive analysis similar to Corvallis, exploring the options like homeowner enforcement, low-cost loans, grants, all the things we talked about in, in February. And ultimately, the city of Corvallis adopted its current fee structure. Rory provided the 2023 memo that he provided to the Corvallis City Council that is in the packet. At that time, Corvallis' sidewalk program was facing significant challenges because they had not raised their sidewalk fee since its inception in 2011. And the revenues did not meet rising costs. And so therefore, the Corvallis program was in jeopardy of becoming unsuccessful. And depending on who you talk to, it was unsuccessful. But at that time, Corvallis recognized that in order to have sustainable success, they were going to have to raise the costs, and they were going to have to do it annually to meet rising costs due to everything that we all face every single year. Some of the key takeaways from the Corvallis approach is that Corvallis conducts proactive sidewalk inspections based on defined criteria with inspection data entered into a centralized database. They've experimented with various methods. And right now, the most efficient approach that they have found is one crew member is actually walking the sidewalks and another crew member is in a truck riding next to them with a laptop entering the data in real time into a spreadsheet. So that is the most efficient. They've tried several others. But for Carlton, if we were going to move forward with something like that, we would need to objectively have evaluation criteria. So we would need clear, consistent standards for sidewalk conditions. And we would need qualified inspectors. We would need to identify staff with necessary experience, whether that's public works or engineering personnel or somebody else to conduct those evaluations. The other thing the city of Corvallis does, it has divided the city into 10 separate districts. Essentially, each district is one-tenth of the city. Each district takes approximately two weeks to inspect with a two-person crew. With one district evaluated per year, you can do the math. It takes 10 years to get back to District Number One before that district is reevaluated. And that is why a lot of times that criteria, as well as the fee and being able to hit the highest priority projects is so essential because they're not coming back for another 10 years. There are some requests that do materialize, materialize what they call out of district, whether that's due to city projects or something that has happened that has made it a higher priority. And you will see later in the document, they do have a contracting process for that. But to, if we were to consider this in Carlton, we would need to consider a district size. Larger districts obviously require more work, more time affecting needs and associated fees. The number of districts would define how often we're reevaluating a district. And again, back to staffing resources, they take dedicated time and personnel impacting other operations. Insights and recommendations from Corvallis. Despite challenges, the Corvallis program has improved walkability and accessibility. The fee is reasonable compared to other potential repair costs as defined by Mr. Ron. For example, paying $2 per month, or actually, they just raised it to $2.30 per, per month, per utility account. In this time, it was $24 annually for the $2 per month. For 100 feet sidewalk replacement, as we talked about last month, typically cost last year $6,000. That's a pretty significant value for a homeowner that's getting their sidewalk replaced. You're paying $24 a year into the program and you get a sidewalk replaced that would cost you $6,000 if you're in your home a number of years, just a quick calculation, that would be 250 years at $24 a year in order to make that $6,000. So it was considered a success from that point of view. He very emphasized prioritization criteria. He said, you're always going to have repairs that exceed the budget. He definitely suggested that, let's say you've evaluated District One and you have X number of projects in District One, and you can only get to Y number of projects. So you have 10 projects, you can only get to eight because that's where the financial resources are. Still move on to District Two. District Two, if there's funds left over, then prioritize the ones you weren't able to to get to District One. But he said, similar to what Gordon was saying about he saw cities get stuck and not doing any projects as far as streets or anything else because they didn't have the funding for the next project on the list, don't get stuck in that cycle. Continue to make forward project in each district and go back as you can. He was emphasizing dedicated oversight. Now, he was actually interviewing somebody who their sole responsibility would be this program. And just oversight, not actually walking the sidewalks, just oversight to make sure that it happened. He said that was also one of the challenges that happened between 2011 and 2023 is that it became an ancillary duty, and therefore it was easier to not fall between the cracks, but to get lost in some of the operational duties between water and sewer and other infrastructure. He did mention street trees. In 2011, Corvallis did shift street tree responsibility to the city, which is a separate fee, which I'm not talking about now. I'm just talking about how it coincides with their sidewalk program. And lessons learned. I am not talking about the city taking on street trees or a fee. I'm just talking about how it coincides with the program. Their lessons learned there was avoid building ramps over tree roots. He said they tend to fail within a few years, which leads to repeat work, which leads to a perception of inefficiencies of the sidewalk program and continuing to go back and repeat mistakes. He said after years of root grinding, the Corvallis has not reported any significant tree loss with the root grinding when they've had to do it for sidewalks. And he said, replace problematic trees with more suitable species when removal is absolutely necessary to help with the sidewalks. That was where their lessons learned. He did say this fiscal year, they are doing a new concept. They are actually putting into the contract bid to allocate funds for an arborist, and they are doing it as an allowance so that the bid person does not have to necessarily guess how much they're going to need an arborist. They allow for an allowance. This allows a separate schedule for, oh, and also they allow for that separate schedule of projects outside district boundaries that includes city properties or anything that may have come up that is deemed a higher criteria. What this does is it streamlines tree evaluations and maximizes resources. Again, this is in part because their street trees are also managed by a different department, not their public works. And so therefore, if they come into an issue with a tree that is causing problems with the sidewalk, there's coordinated effort. And so by allowing for an arborist to come in, it streamlines that process. So there's not weeks where a sidewalk's been done up and they dug up and they can't replace it. Project costs and output. In 2024, Corvallis had a $200,000 contract and it completed 1,200 linear feet or 6,000 square feet of sidewalk repairs. They do have the staff capability in-house, which we would have to analyze should we look at any program to be able to grind and provide small asphalt ramps where you get that small lift in sidewalks and you can just do that small inch or inch and a half of ramp. We're not talking about ramps over tree roots, just that small ramp or grinding down the sidewalk to avoid that trip and fall. They do have that ability in-house, and that is something we would need to consider should we pursue discussions. So this information is just for your information only. No action is needed. This is just for you to review and have. I will continue working on getting information from the city of Woodburn and bring that forward to the city council at that time.
Thank you, Shannon. Are there any questions you wanted to ask her tonight?
Yes.
I don't think it's going to be necessarily questions, but I am looking forward to hopefully getting in touch with Woodburn because I do see some potential issues as even Corvallis experienced. You know, with the city taking over responsibility, they saw that go up 110% on their reporting. And I could see that happening, too. Once, once the community knows it's no longer my responsibility, I'm going to report every dang sidewalk out there that needs repaired. So we would be inundated with that for sure. Staffing is an issue. As you pointed out, Corvallis is much bigger than us. They have the ability to have a public work staff that can make small repairs, whereas I don't see us doing that. So I'm kind of interested in the Woodburn solution, or not solution, their I don't know what happened, like a cost-sharing kind of thing. And I would also, I appreciate this information. I think it's good for us to look at it because something does need to kind of change, whether it's enforcement, whether it's program like this. But kind of like the rail corridor, I would definitely want to have a town hall before we moved into anything and make sure we get that feedback, we propose some plans, some options, and hear from everybody on what makes sense. I mean, I have my opinion, but so those are problems, concerns I see coming up. I do appreciate the information, and I look forward to hopefully hearing back from Woodburn, so.
I think any decision on this, and I know we're not at the decision point right now, but I would not be comfortable making a decision for people on this. I think it would have to be somehow voted on. And I just, I can't imagine deciding for people that they're going to pay an additional fee. The feedback I get from community members is they're overwhelmed with utility fees right now and adding another fee, no matter how nominal we may perceive it to be. It would be inappropriate to, to apply this without a vote.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, in essence, there is, I'd say a fee, but for any folks who build a new home in Carlton or do a substantial remodel of a home, and there is no sidewalk present there or it's deteriorated, you're required to put a sidewalk in. When we remodeled our home that we purchased here in Carlton, it cost us almost $3,000 to put a sidewalk in. So I'm saying that in connection with your concerns, Susan, about a fee. I mean, because essentially, there's already a fee. So I think what I'm understanding about this is it sort of kind of spreads the cost out as opposed to being the responsibility of just one, each individual homeowner, unless I'm mistaken.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate your comment, Shirley, and understand what you're saying. And while I agree that it would, for me, I would think this might be a good idea. I am not convinced that everyone in town is willing for me to make that decision unilaterally for them. And I think at any point when we're adding fees, that we need to be really cognizant that people want to vote on additional fees to their utility. And I know it's not a utility fee, but it would be on the utility and
I definitely agree that it should be communicated and through a town hall, et cetera. Absolutely. It should not be something that the city or the council imposes on its citizens without their input. I definitely agree with that.
Thank you. Alrighty, moving right along. Item H, Urban Form Yamhill.
Hannah, this is where I'm going to, thank you. So Hannah's going to make a change to your screen so that you can see my screen. Urban Form is working with Sedcor as you see in your memo in order to basically condense a lot of zoning information into one, for lack of a better term, clearinghouse. And so this isn't a perfect system, but I wanted to give you an idea of what it would look like because they are actually doing a virtual presentation to learn more on Wednesday, March 19th. And that is for everybody. That is for members of the public, that's for members of council, and that information is in the packet for registration. And I do encourage everyone to participate that they can in this meeting because it is an important tool for the county of Yamhill. As you see in there, they believe we're the first county to ever do this and to digitize records this way. Sedcor has funded the entire process up until this point. They are not asking us for money at this point. I'm just showing you what the possibilities are. So this is generally speaking, and I'm sorry, one of their downfalls that I found today is it looks like it is not made ideal for smaller screens. So it looks, the right side looks much larger than it does when I'm looking on my laptop. But so that's just one thing they'll have to look, work on. And as I zone in, the city, to the city of Carlton, you can see that it starts to outline in color code things, a lot of times by zoning. You will see that it's also identified FEMA floodplains. And that you can actually, is anybody brave enough to yell out an address that I can look up? Check in. Anybody else? So you can click on this property. Right now, it's providing a summary. You can see that it's zoned R1. You can see that the sources are hyperlinked, city of Carlton, and you can click on those hyperlinks and it will take you right to our planning code. You can see the lot size, height limits, and again, it takes you to the, those hyperlinks all take you to where they found this information. And I will tell you, you can play around with this. We didn't help them with this. This was all publicly available information that they linked. You can go to identifiers. There's the jurisdiction, there's the tax lot ID, the assessor map, and it can take you right to Yamhill County GIS. And talk about existing structures, what the assessor has said. We're going to quickly go by that since somebody was brave enough to tell us. Where he went, the structure details, the year it was built. What is it zoned? What is that source? Where is it? The FEMA floodplain? Lot information. Uses, allowable uses. So it tells you, single-family dwelling, utilities, planned unit development, childcare, is that all allowed? Is bed and breakfast allowed? And so on and so forth, and it goes through coverage, height setbacks, units, massing, and then other. So I do encourage everybody to attend this March 19th meeting so that you can see for yourself and attend, ask your questions. This is being rolled out publicly, again, this isn't something, this is what they're working with Sedcor, with the county, with Yamhill County as a whole. Um, this is not something they're asking for the city for money for at this point in time. I did ask when I saw some of these capabilities and what the overlays were because they started mentioning other cities that had overlay zones that weren't necessarily clear in their planning codes. They were able to include those as overlays so that people knew how those overlays affected their property, whether those were historic or something else downtown. Um, I did ask, you know, is this something that could track things like who has vacation rental licenses? Who has home occupation permits? Who has backflow devices? And the answers I received conceptually were yes. And so again, I encourage you to go to the source, hear it from the people who have developed this, skid their background information, and then uh, we can continue to talk about this, this program as it is rolled out. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Alrighty. Item eight, A I, H I. Council liaison on opportunities and neighbors helping neighbors discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, um, your council rules um, talk about council liaison opportunities. We've typically handled these rules pretty informally, but to enhance citizen engagement and promote transparency and also to allow for a significant number of the liaison opportunities that have been handled by staff and transferring them to city council members would not only promote greater community engagement, but would allow staff to focus on other engagement opportunities such as community corner meetings or upcoming town halls. And so um, before we get to neighbors helping neighbors, you will see that there's a spreadsheet. Um, I did use another city as sort of an outline. Um, many of these things, as you will see, have been informally or sometimes formally on a one-off assigned to a council member. Some things that I could really use help on are like the Carlton Fund Days Planning Committee. Um, you will see that that meets the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM, um, that would be helpful. In the intent of this, and there's also some other uh, groups on here. Um, we do, could probably use a backup for the Carlton Business Association as well as there's a couple of other places for some backup. I will mention that the Planning Commission is one that needs significant consideration. It is legislative items only. And the reason for is, as we've discussed, is that as city council members, you are often the appeal process. And so any involvement as a liaison with that commission, cause that's often uh, a gray line. Any involvement would have to stay at an incredibly high level. It would have to be reported if any case comes to you. It would have to be disclosed, anything you heard, anything that would happen at the Planning Commission, and you may have to recuse yourself from any decision. So that is one that needs to be taken care of or taken great care on. Um, but the idea is, is that we would then offer opportunities at uh, our monthly meetings for council liaisons to report back and be able to inform the public and also to be having council discussion. Carlton Fund Days, I hate to give that one up, it is one of my favorites. It is one of the most fun, as it says in the title. But um, it is one that I probably can give up to be able to do community corner in the town hall. It's probably one of the easier ones.
Do we volunteer tonight? I'd like to do the Fun Days.
That would be wonderful.
Um, quick question, I know you took that from another city. Is it required that we have a Planning Commission liaison? I don't want to touch that with a 10-foot pole, so.
It is not.
It seems very touchy.
It is not, although I will tell you, if any of you choose to listen in, the same requirements apply. Whether you have the.
That's why I don't attend.
Whether you have the title liaison or not, if you choose to listen in remotely or in the audience, the same requirements apply. So I heard uh, Councillor Thompson-Riser, you were volunteering for the Fun Days?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for taking my favorite committee.
I, I wouldn't mind, I can be the backup for the um, Carlton Fire District. I do serve on their budget committee, so I don't know if that is in any issue. It doesn't seem very formal, but.
No, I attend, I give a brief update of city projects that I think impact the fire district, like West Main, sanitary work, water work. Um, I take any questions that they may have, it's really a relationship building. And I take any information that I hear and often come back to staff and say, is this something we can coordinate with the fire board to help support both of our organizations? Similarly, what I've done with the CBA in the past four years.
Yeah. Just want to stress alternate on that.
Yes, sir.
Want to take this home and think it over, folks?
If anybody's looking at the Yamhill County Equity Action Group and wondering what that is, I can provide you a link and it's a very easy way to zoom in and just see what the group is all about. Um, Councillor Thompson-Riser recently did that when they were talking about emergency preparedness for me. Um, and so she maybe will also give some insights, but that is an easy way just to see if, what the organization is about and if you're interested in attending. To let me know and I could forward that off.
Okay, any other discussion?
Okay, uh, moving on to neighbors helping neighbors. In alignment with the council goals to strengthen community engagement, um, there have been several areas that have been mentioned where volunteer involvement could provide meaningful support, such as dependent care during public meetings, um, staffing of cooling or warming shelters, uh, centers, sorry, I should not say shelter. Um, assisting with city events such as dump days, parade support during Fun Days, which would be separate than the liaison position. Um, event setup such as National Night Out or Fun Days, cleanup of those events. Um, helping citizens with yard cleanup for code compliance or general maintenance. Sometimes we have citizens that are just struggling to be able to accomplish that, whether it's they don't have the vehicle to remove the materials or whether uh, are not there, having the challenges getting the specific work done. Um, and on park and rail corridor cleanup activities that we have done in the past. What I have done, because while this program's a valuable asset and additional support for staff, there are several logistical and operational considerations to consider. And so the attached outline talks about some key highlights and factors that would have to be considered in any program, such as waivers, background checks. Sorry, I'm flipping too fast, insurance, safety guidelines, um, identifying services, setting expectations, and so on and so forth, that is mentioned in several bullet points in the memorandum. Um, I would like council to consider this because this is a lot of material to consider. And I would like to bring this back to council at the next meeting after you've had a month to review it and just see if this is something you want to invest in an entire program or like we've done is piecemeal at this point in time. So when Councillor Erickson does an event cleanup, that we have already done the waivers with the county and worked on that and we have that staffed. So if that's okay with council.
Okay. Alrighty. Is that? So we are down to the long-term debt schedule?
That would be me. So we did have a question regards in the audit to the long-term debt schedule that is listed in there. It shows that it expires in 2034 and um, that it looks like it's a 10-year debt. Um, during the time of the financing, um, I had to go back a little ways because it was through 21 and 22. But we did have a rising interest during that and to get the uh, lowest amount of rate and to um, meet council goals of the ability to prepay the debt if we got extra funds or didn't spend much, we created a 20-year amortization loan. And at the end of year nine, um, we will seek to refinance if we don't refinance before then, because that was during a, a rising um, market. So a couple of the notes on that, um, it was the only way to get a favorable interest rate at the time because of that rising interest rate, and so that was the financing package before us. Um, and the financing reoptions that are available before us, before 2034, if, if interest rates dis- decrease significantly, the city can choose to refinance. Or if we get um, more grants and stuff to the building, we can pay that back. In 2034, the remaining debt can be refinanced with a larger financial institution. What I mean by that is a US bank, Key Bank, they want 10-year loans, so it's going to be highly marketable at that component. And then our lender government capital leasing is keeping an eye on the market for anything favorable in between. So we're going to have a lot of options in 2034 with a larger and a more favorable rate at that time.
So I um, actually, I was the one that asked the question. Why, so I understand that there's a plan to refinance um, at that time. I'm confused why the audit doesn't give the reader of the audit a clear picture because we will still, regardless of whether we refinance it, we will still be obligated for a long-term debt through 2044, right?
Correct.
Right, um, and so it's um, it seems like the audit should reflect that to me. So that when we consult the audit to find out, gosh, I wonder how much debt we have.
It's an accurate, accurate reflection of the debt. The what um, is a little confusing is that in 2034, at that time, we will have to restructure that debt. So the audit is to reflect how the current piece is. So it shows in that 10th year that we would be paying off the debt when in actuality it would be a refinance. So the audit's not going to speak to that, that's speaking to the actual debt schedule.
So we'll refinance in 10 years or nine years possibly?
Possibly or sooner, depending on the rate structure because we have a very um, strong government cap, uh, government capital is very strong in city buildings and shopping. But at year 10, we're going to get a really good rate with a larger institution because they want the 10-year loan, they don't want a 20-year loan.
Um, does, does the auditor present their findings at any point? Is that something that's presented to council?
Yes, it's sent to council and board, uh, council and board every year. And we've been fortunate, we have not had any findings.
Right.
Yeah, so um, they do present it and it is mailed to your home address or your mailing address.
But they don't come to council and present their, their audit?
They could come to council if there was findings to report that.
It seems like typically auditors, once they've complete their audit, they present. But they don't, but you don't request that they do that?
No, it's, it's something council can look at. They send all the documents to each councillor and we post it on the website immediately and broadcast it out for our citizens.
Okay, could I um, could I ask to request, um, just to look at that? I know you sent the covenants, could I just see that whole, what we agreed to? Is that possible?
Are you, were you talking the finance documents that we gave council?
Yeah, yeah, but can I just see all the agreement, the, the entire agreement that you did with your bondholders?
Is that a request or is that, do I need consensus of the council to do that? Of a records request? Or is it consensus? I would need consensus of the council to do that, otherwise it would be a records request.
So it's a secret? I mean, it doesn't feel like.
It's a, it's a records request when any citizen, we treat everybody equal, request, it's a records request. But council can by consensus circumvent the public records request.
Uh, yeah, I actually would just like to go through and look at the, at the, at the agreement that we made, um, just so I'm familiar with it. Not that I doubt anything you said, I honestly, I don't. I, I just, it's just, I'm more comfortable knowing when people ask me questions about it.
These are great conversations to have, most of the time, people don't want to hear much what I have to say. So um, uh, this is, this is really beneficial, so it's a great conversation. So if the council wants me to bring, not yet. Um, if the council wants me to bring forth that document and supply it to the full council, again, I can do that. I don't know if you still have the one from 21 or 22, I think, but I can dig that back up.
I would like to see it, I don't know how the rest of you feel. But I think it's important to know um, in detail what we've agreed to.
I believe it's also on the website, if I'm correct in the packets, but I don't know the, the date.
I'm okay with the request.
Hey. We will provide, it'll be provided to.
Oh, sorry, I thought I heard four people. I'm sorry.
I was just saying I was okay with it, I didn't say voting for anybody. I, I guess I'm, maybe a little bit of clarification, we're just, we're talking about a document that was provided to the public, that was provided.
Yeah, and I still believe it's on the website, I, but I can, I can get.
I mean, is it like, we're literally talking 10 minutes of your time, are we talking like?
Well, I can tell you, this event has been about 13 hours of my time, so. Um, but the document is on the website and I can find it, so.
So, sorry. My opinion, I don't know that it's in the interest of the council to authorize you to do it without separately a record request, maybe by Councillor Terrell.
I'd be happy to make a public records request, but it seems like that streamlines the process, thank you.
Okay, that leads me to the next thing. Last council meeting, um, we had a request on uh, some, want someone speak to the debt obligation summary. And with that, um, speaking to the debt obligation summary, it did cause some concerns to our citizens. So Amy's going to hand you a document, I'm going to go over it because I think there's some confusion. Um, we had, the city had multiple people reach out and felt that we were in financial distress. And so we're going to go over the debt obligation summary so that if any constituent comes to you, you'd be able to speak to that um, more clearly. So this document is in the bud, thank you, Amy. This budget is in the document um, every year and it's a debt obligation summary. This is going to be for FY '26 and this will be in the final packet. If any audience member wants to see it, it'll be posted on the website. So um, the debt overview is just a summary, it talks about what type of debt we have and our legal debt um, margin, and this is where the confusion came in play. The city can only take out 3% of real market value of a debt obligation for a full faith obligation loan. The real market value is always a year behind, so you're going to see here, you've got 561 million. It's a year behind, it's not even the current year's um, real property value. And then the assessed valuation, um, that's just an assessed value from the um, tax assessor. Our debt limit rate is 3% and it's um, the. Our debt limit rate is 3% and it's, the Carlton's debt limit is, we can have 16,851,000 and change for our debt limit. Our only qualifying debt that we have to that 3% is 8 million. I'll just say 8 million. So we do have availability for additional debt that would keep us at that 3% of almost $9 million. But where it's on the back page, this is new because I feel that every question is worth more education, is we're going to add some FAQs. What is not included in the debt? So your water and sewer bonds, those are not included debt, any utility. If we decide to build a motor vehicle parking facility, that's not included in the debt. Hospitals and any voter approved, so a voter approved is the pool house. That's not included also in the 3% because that's paid back by the taxpayers roughly around 60 cents. So another question that arose and where the, the citizens got anxious is we, someone stated that in an emergent, emergency, we have no money. So per RORs, the city does have authority to declare a state of emergency within its jurisdiction and that can facilitate access to state and federal funds, low-interest loans if we were at that point. But again, water, sewer, stormwater, major infrastructure doesn't even apply to this situation. And then the last question that comes up a lot, why in the documents is the civic center called GeoBond 2023, you'll see it in the audit. It's because any long-term debt that's reported to the state is considered a bonded debt agreement. That does not mean it's a GeoBond debt such as the pool building of 2015 and that's also confusing. So having this document so that you can explain it and help ease the fear that was incited. The city has a very healthy reserve, we have more than most cities. We are prudent in following our fiscal policies. But after we had several people reach out to us, we thought it was important that council also be educated to speak to it in case they're not coming to us. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item K, city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council, I just want to go through a few highlights. I will not go through this memo that's in the council packet line by line. I just want to hit a few highlights from our last meeting. The wastewater treatment plant upgrade, as Gordon mentioned in the work session. Pre-construction has happened, we have issued the notice to proceed. We are waiting from the 1200C permit from the DEQ to start hard construction. This is funded through a $5.8 million state ARPA grant and $1 million of city funds. Right now, the project completion deadline by the grant is September 1st, 2026. The notice of proceed has a substantial completion of January 29th, 2026. The goal is to have it finished sooner than that. The other one, Grant Street, we actually talked about that earlier today when we were talking about West Main Street of the 2.2 million that is going to be going into sanitary work for Grant Street as well as West Main Street that is proceeding. We were able to, through this project, the city is normally required to have a 25% match. Your city staff went through the process and we were able to get that 25% waived, which allows us to free up funds for other activities related to sanitary work and other grant work that we're going to talk about. So we are hoping that will be constructed this year. We have a half a million dollars secured from FY '24 from Congresswoman Salinas that is being, is through the USDA. The 2.2 million is coming through the EPA, the half a million is coming through the USDA. I have enough, many of these funds come with a laundry list of requirements before we can even get the funds that we were promised to get. So we still have to go through like a process of application even though we, they were directed to go to us. So I have an appointment next Monday to sit down with the USDA to go over 90% of the funds. We're still working, or 90% of the application requirements, I apologize, it's late. So I will go through that, what is outstanding is we are waiting, we have a very specific engineering contract requirement through the USDA and Gordon is going through that. We've gotten a cost analysis and then he's going through the contract requirements and that will be the last piece for that half a million. In the meantime, Congresswoman Salinas in the FY '25 federal budget year, which is still pending, given the continuing resolutions at the federal level. We are earmarked to have another $1 million to add to that half a million. Now that is dependent on what happens at the federal level with the FY '25 budget. So we are hopeful and if that goes through, we will be able to take care of East Main Street, not only the Forest Main, but also the sanitary line on that. And that is the plan. And we have already put into the capital program for those 25% matching funds. McMinnville Water and Light, I have been reviewing other water agreements throughout Oregon and the state of Washington. I had our attorneys that specialize in water kind of take my favorite provisions and pull them together. And as of yesterday, I then reevaluated them and tried to make it a little more simpler. And I have then sent it back off to them as well as I've gotten Gordon and Brian's insight this afternoon and I will review those tomorrow. We are also hosting a meeting, actually the COG, Council of Governments is hosting a meeting here in Carlton on Thursday with city administrators in the Yamhill County region to talk about water needs as a region with McMinnville Water and Light. I, let's see. Some of these, yeah, the TSP is proceeding. The PAC and the Public Open House is scheduled for April 15th. So please mark your calendars for that with the Joint Planning Commission and City Council Session for May-June. We are working with the Gallardi Group who has done our utility rate analysis over the last few years. We have submitted our CIP work and she is looking at all of the grants that Gordon has talked about impacting our utility rate system. We've projected out what we will need to accomplish over the next few years per master plans. And we are hoping to see a significant impact of that grant work into our utility rate structure. Obviously, there is more to come on that, so we'll see what that comes up. I do want to remind council that there is required FEMA training by our insurance company for council members and we did ask that that be completed by the end of March, please. Please also.
I'm sorry, that was just one training, right, that FEMA?
There were a couple of training classes.
Did I finish, Amy?
I'll double check, I know you completed the FEMA one, but there was an ICS one, 100, but I'll double check and let you know.
So please let Amy know if you have any challenges in completing those courses and we can help try to facilitate that. Please note on your budget committee duties, May 1st and May 6th, we will be having budget committee meetings. So please make sure your calendars are marked. And then Hannah, if you could please bring up the website. Okay, so first, we're going to visit planning, some work that we've done on the planning website. You will notice on the landing page, we've done some modification about describing the uniqueness of the Oregon land use system and how to participate and what public participate, participation means. How does one get notified, why didn't I get a notice? I may have submitted a comment, something, nothing's changed. So just a little more detail about the uniqueness of the Oregon land use process. We also added a section, we've modeled it off the city of Albany. And I will tell you, I recognize the city of Albany may receive a few more land use actions than we do. But since we've modeled it off the city of Albany, the city of Albany has one dedicated staff employee that does nothing but monitor a website like I'm about to show you. And that is, we will correct it from past land use actions to land use actions in the menu. But it's land use actions and it talks about pre-applications and what those are, what the application, what step to, when you can submit comments and why. And it was part of the land use process. When the staff reports come out, notices of decision and appeals process. But you also see at the bottom, applications, and again, this is just the last year for approved applications. And you will find in there complimentary materials like the staff report, the notice of decision variants, and so on and so forth. Excuse me. So when you're wondering whether or not a land use application has been submitted on a particular piece of property, I would encourage you to look at this site. And we will work diligently to keep those, that information uploaded. Like I said, this is a new thing we've added to the website and we've modeled it after Albany. And we will do our best to keep our staff, to keep it current and as up to the minute as possible. The other thing I want to show you is some improvements to our finance page is Christie was mentioning. We've done some improvements to the finance department and about what the finance department does as far as procurement and payments, financial oversight, debt management. And here's a new section, stay informed and engaged, and these are actually hyperlinks. These are all on the menu to the left-hand side of this page, but you can also hyperlink here if that's easier for people to navigate. The other thing that we added was the accounts payable page, we made some improvements there. And so you can see I just got to that on the left-hand side by going to the accounts payable page. And that gives you information about responsibilities and what that function does within the city as well as it has a link to bids and RFPs when those are applicable. And most pages do have a frequently asked questions. We have recognized that our new website update has tended to intermingle frequently asked questions as well as eliminated some that we had on here. So we're working and we do appreciate your feedback as we work through this to improve the frequently asked questions that have been adjusted and modified through the website migration process. And then for tonight's show and tell, last but not least, we're going to go to our community and emergency links. And this is the webpage that Christie was referring to earlier. Lisa? Is this, this one is? Yep? So we have Citizen Alert. We have information there and also hyperlinks to Yamhill County. We have CERT information. Again, you have the contact information. Be two weeks ready. Hyperlinked there as well as some information. Seasonal preparedness. Microphone, Christie, microphone.
Julie, one of our staff created that seasonal logo for emergency preparedness. Just have to give her kudos, it was pretty creative.
And you can see each one of these has a hyperlink so that you can go to that information. Community resources. And we talk about the CERT team, Red Cross, senior center first aid CPR classes. Useful links, 211, emergency notifications, this is very important to sign up for, as well as the Yamhill County emergency notifications. And information from Red Cross, HUD, Ready.gov, our favorite FEMA organization of Are You Ready? And then we have some supporting documents down below. I just wanted to be able to show you how to, how to see some of those improvements that we've been making through the website. So thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Just one comment. Thank you for trying to communicate with our citizens better even though it's through a website. Having that information out there is very important and having it easily accessible is very important also, so thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I would be faulty, I just saw one of my notes, I apologize, it'll take five seconds. Ms. Martinez was successful at our CIS conference in securing a $5,000 second place for our snowplow attachment this last week.
Wow.
You should play the video.
It's very embarrassing to get in front of a, it's all the cities go to the conference, but Brian really wanted that snowplow attachment, so I presented, I told him I was voluntold that I had to do that, so I had to answer if it was an undermount and what coating and what was the snowfall. But I did it, we got second place, so he's going to be able to get it. And Brian has been appropriately appreciative. He, he's very thankful, he was in wonderment that I won. One of the images I created was a Public Works truck with a Public Works guy on the hood and the snow, put two snow shovels on the front of the truck and I said, told them that's how we currently did it. And so that was the most question asked in the queue, they all wanted to ride in that truck, so.
Mayor, may I just say too, I attended the CIS conference and the other two Shark Take presentations got approximately zero laughs, very dry. One of them was about finding dead bodies, not very fun, but everybody enjoyed Christie's the most and was laughing and fun and she got grilled afterwards and did great. It was a really fantastic presentation, a really good showing for the city.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you. Okay, one more time, is there a motion to approve? We're not approving, we're approving Christie, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Good night. Let's see, I don't, anymore, I don't even know.